Good evening and welcome to the Building Committee Meeting of September 10, 2025. In addition to the Building Committee, we are joined by School Board members Sarah Sadaskin, Sarah Robinson. And tonight on our agenda is seeing some updated cost estimates and timelines and some value engineering options. So I am going to turn it over to HMFH. Barb, there's a seat up here.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so the agenda for this evening, we're going to give you a brief overview of the current design and the DD process, dive into the cost estimate. Jack is going to talk about the projected tax impact. We're going to talk about, then we're going to show you a list of alternates and value engineering options. And then discussion. So just a brief overview of the design. So the new school is located on the west side of the Runlet site. Access to the site remains from South Street, so there's a reconfigured driveway that runs between the middle school and Abbott Downing School. We've separated parent traffic, parent and bus traffic with a parent drop-off on the south side of the site and a bus drop-off on the north side of the site. There are three athletic fields to replace the three fields on the west side of the site, and then two basketball courts and a small play area sort of adjacent to the entry. Next?
Have we completed the traffic study that looks at Cypress Street as a bus?
We have.
And that's online, Terry? Or do we know?
So we did a, that was part of the preliminary study when we were evaluating both sites. We looked at access from Cypress Street, so I can pull out the date. I think that was a presentation from the traffic engineer.
Great, thank you.
And we have also met with the city to review. We had a preliminary planning review where we talked about kind of traffic and showed the city the updated site plan.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the current design is about 214,000 gross square feet, and about 10,000 of that is mechanical enclosures up on the roof of the building. The building was designed to support kind of the team teaching model that the middle school uses, and we have nine teen pods that each have three academic classrooms and a dedicated science lab in the pod. And that teen pod is where students will spend most of their day. And then I'm not going to go through the list of kind of the exploratories, but here is a list of all of the other exploratories and features in the building.
And it matches pretty much what they have in Runlet now, but things are right-sized. So I think the only thing that we added was the food tech, different than what they have now.
And would you explain what you mean by right-sized?
Sorry, so a lot of the spaces that are in Runlet don't really meet state guidelines for square footages, so they're undersized. So this building is bigger because we've right-sized classrooms and science labs.
So the gym is in line with state standards for gymnasiums in a middle school?
Yes. Thank you. Yep. And if you go back to the, kind of, sorry, if you go back to the program document that we looked at earlier in the, you know, design development stage, you'll see that the biggest increase in square footage is really in academic space. And it's like what Tina's saying, it's right sizing those classrooms. So there are currently classrooms that are 725 square feet in the building, which, you know, the recommended is 900.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we have to make the school bigger than the current one.
Correct.
To be up to code, that's what it sounds like.
We're clarifying for the public. The school has to be larger.
Yeah, yeah. Meet the state standard.
So some of the features of the new middle school, the, you know, the building has been designed to be both cost-effective, energy-efficient, and to minimize long-term maintenance. So, you know, some of the strategies that we use to get there, we have a very compact footprint, we have a high-performance envelope, and we specified cost-effective, durable materials like brick for the exterior and polished concrete and linoleum for the flooring inside of the building. Any other questions about the current design and what was priced?
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to go through a lot of numbers. So we're happy to take questions as they come. And if I've not explained something clear enough, please ask a question, raise your hand, let me know, and we can, we'll just keep at it to make sure it all makes sense. We wanted to start by first talking about the reconciliation process. We had two independent estimators, one being Harvey Construction, who's the CM, and the other one was from HMFH called PM and C. Both estimators take our drawings, they look at everything we have in specifications, they take all their takeoffs, they all do individual line item by line item of everything in the building. And then we sit down in a room for about 10 hours and we reconcile them.
It's like eight hours, but it felt like 10?
It feels like 10, sometimes 12. But we go line by line and make sure that both estimators are carrying similar quantities. If things are different, the specialists, you know, they have specialized HVAC estimators on both sides, they hash it out. The architects were in the room to help adjust scope. We say, oh, nope, that scope was incorrect, or, you know, these drawings show this a little wrong. So in the end, both estimators came within 3% of each other, which is considered a reconciled estimate. And from there, we worked with Harvey on the value engineering to get the prices, because ultimately Harvey will be the one responsible for the GMP, so we want to make sure that their, their estimate of record is what we go with. And again, the GMP is called the Guaranteed Maximum Price. That is something that will be set once the whole project is bid, and that's what we were designed to, right? So at the end of this, when we have the budget approved by you guys, that is the, that is the budget that we are going to set going forward, and we will never go over that budget. We'll always reconcile to that budget number. So to begin, the total project costs, and it might come with a little shock, but it's $171 million. That is made up of the building costing $123 million, the site costs $20 million. We broke those out because site varies on project to project, and we know we like to compare what's happening in New Hampshire here, what's happening there. So we wanted to make sure that we broke those line items out so that when we do those comparisons, they're more apples to apples. And then the soft cost number, again, that's on the soft costs of the owners, the money above and beyond the hard costs, so it's all owner money, meaning there's a contingency that the owner carries for airs and emissions and drawings, unforeseen conditions, things that come up in construction that couldn't be planned for, that you might need more money to pull from. The goal is to minimize any of the, any use of that money. It also has costs in there, and Jack will get into some more, fixed furniture and equipment to carry, because your building has to be equipped with the right furniture going forward. There's IT costs, you have to buy new infrastructure, so there's legal costs in there, there's money to hire a clerk of the works who will be someone that will be your day-to-day person on the job site every single day, so that's, that's in there. The architecture fees are in there, so those are all the monies that make up the soft cost numbers. Any questions on that? I also want to just let you know that the $171 million includes 100% solar and a net-zero building. So we will have line items that will allow us to pull money out, you know, and those are on, on those line items. But when Jack was running the numbers, he said, let's, let's go with the worst-case scenario so we can see what that tax impact would be. And then we have the list of value engineering that we compare back to get to whatever budget makes the most sense. So taking that one further step back, I wanted to go back to January meeting, the SBC meeting of 2025. At that meeting, we presented the 60% cost estimate of DD, so we're now in 100% DD, which means we've progressed the drawings 40% more. We also shifted sites, so we had a lot of work to redo. But at that time, broken ground was presented at 156 million, a little more than 156 million total project cost. We came and we said, what would it cost if we went to Runlet? We did a cost exercise, and we presented 164 million at that time. And then again, comparing that to today's current, there's 171 million. The main, we'll go over the premiums, but the big difference between that 164 and 171 right now is the 5.6 million that we added in for 100% solar. So that wasn't in the 165 before. So if you actually take that out, we're actually about $500,000 more than we were, than we had estimated at that 125 million. Does that make sense to anybody? I'd say there's going to be lots of numbers, so I want to make sure I say it all clearly. The premium, that the delta between the two sites, we had given a slide to explain what that delta was. It had to do with site investigation and design and engineering fees to go to the new site, so we had to start DD over again. Harvey came up with the phased construction, because now you're on a very tight site that you're going to have a lot of moving parts, you're going to have a lot more safety measures taking place with the students, so there was a $900,000 premium. We also have to abate and demolish the existing Runlet school. So that abatement, we got the number back, is around 2.8 million, and the remainder is how much it costs to just demo the building after that. So when you just take those numbers alone, it's around $8 million, and that makes up that delta between the 156 and 164. There was one number that you see, the asterisk, called ground improvements. This is something we did not account for. Part of that site investigation, we had to do another geotechnical survey, and what it came back with, I'm going to flip to the next, oop, I went the wrong way, I apologize. What it came back with was the soils are not great in the Runlet site, unfortunately. We also double-checked same soils at the Abbott Downing School, and they are actually fine if we went back to that geotechnical report. So it's really just, we're just in a bad batch of area, sometimes it happens. So essentially what this means is we have to use, create additional structure, bracing, we have to add more bracing, more lateral loads. It's more about if an earthquake were to hit, what would happen to the soils? The other piece is we have to do what's called rammed aggregate piers. So if you can imagine just augering down so many feet within the ground and pounding it with stone, what happens is that, and you do that every, we'll say, 10 to 12 feet on the center of wherever your building footprint's going to be, and what that does is it allows the soils that might move to, it's almost like a sponge, it kind of takes the water and it lets it goes between the soils, so the soils don't have that option to liquefy when it shakes.
And this is required by skate building code?
This is, so what happened, what's really happened is that there's a new building code. And the new building code has different ways to classify sites. So when the geotechnical reports are going, the site might not have been classified that prior to this building code, but now with the new building codes, and everyone knows building codes, the longer you wait, building codes will, they'll get more strict and they'll require more and more things. The other side of this is it essentially takes renovating Runlet off the table completely. I know we're not here to talk about that, but I just wanted to let you know that there, it is possible still, and Keith could tell you what he did on another project, but you would have to essentially move every kid out of Runlet for the entirety of the renovation, because you have to go and dig and put those new piles inside the footprint of the school to stabilize the soils under your existing structure, and that is just too disruptive to allow kids to be in the building at the same time.
And that would be a renovation if you were going to make the building ADA compliant?
Correct.
Not if you were slapping a new roof on it?
Not if you're slapping a roof. It's, there's, there's going to be thresholds, right? And I think what we've, we've learned with Runlet over time is that you're getting to a breaking point where at some point, one summer pair is going to trigger enough work that's going to require upgrading everything.
Right.
And then you're going to have to upgrade ADA, and once you have to do that, then it's just, it's just a trickle effect, and you have to bring it all up to current codes. And even the HVAC, if you were to replace the HVAC, the weight of that new HVAC on your roof is going to require that structure to be stabilized. Once you have to stabilize that structure, it goes all the way down to the soils, therefore, so really, any kind of new HVAC system is probably going to trigger a complete, you know, redo of all the soils underneath your existing building.
If it's on the roof.
If it's, if it goes on the roof, correct.
Do you have something?
I'm assuming then it would trigger also the electrical, because the HVAC is going to require
Correct.
The 1957 panels, and there's probably some new ones, but it's a domino effect.
And then once that's the ADA, and then everything, and then you're moving walls, and yeah, so...
Just like any of these old homes in Concord, the renovations, I'm sure people can relate to that in the community.
Every light fixture costs $2,000.
They sign knob and tube every time!
I know, right? It's true, it's very true. So kind of recapping from, I believe, what Tina and Holly presented last time they were here, we have been continuing to research the post-construction rebates and credits. We know now, now that the one big beautiful bill has passed, that the ground geothermal tax credits will remain in the one big beautiful bill. So those are, they're extended all the way to like 2036 maybe, something pretty far out, so those are very safe. So meaning, and we're currently showing the geothermal in here, and you'll see how that actually impacts, these tax credits impact the cost effectiveness of that system. You know, we have three other examples that we compared it to, and it's by far the most economical way to go now with, with the size of the tax credit you're expected. The other two have asterisks, which are the solar. And again, in order to take advantage of these, you have to buy solar. It is putting a sunset on those much sooner, those tax credits, but if you move quickly, meaning if we're able to purchase 10% of the cost of solar, which in this case would be around $500,000, and you were to store that before January, July, I always say January, July 1st of 2026, then we believe you are still locking yourself in and eligible to get those tax credits. So that's another, you know, $2 million. So you're spending five, but you're getting $2 million back. Yep, sorry. Okay. So what it does is it makes solar much more affordable, and it makes the payback solar work when you can have those tax credits.
And we would not need to pay for natural gas with the geothermal?
Correct.
And the areas that
Yes.
The solar would end up, meaning we wouldn't really have an electric bill?
Correct. So the idea
Metering is included.
Technically, you'll still have an electric bill. But how it'll work, and we still have to work all this out with the Unitil, but we're projecting, you know, to produce enough solar that would make you, essentially make you a net-zero school, meaning whatever you're producing in your school, you're providing enough solar to offset that. Now, in the winter, you're probably producing more, you're, you're using more energy than you're producing, so you'll have an energy, you'll have an electric bill. But in the summer, you'll be receiving a lot of credits, because you're producing a lot and not using a lot. So the idea is that net metering over the year, they'll cancel each other out if you have, if you end up producing more than you actually use, then there's hopefully a potential to sell those back and make even more money. And there's other ways that you can sell recs that we won't even get into, but, so there's different ways that you can use solar. What I've learned through all this research in solar is that the only way to mitigate, the only way to mitigate against future rising energy prices, whether it's solar or gas, is to own your own solar, because it doesn't matter at that point how high solar goes, or how electric goes, it doesn't matter how high gas goes. If you, if you're producing enough on-site, you're always not paying, right? So
Yeah.
And the payback gets even better at that point.
I can attest to this. I haven't had a solar bill, or I haven't had an electrical bill all summer, but I did get 20 bucks a month from Unitil, because we were making more than we used. So like, imagine that on a larger scale. I mean, realistically, within that framework, you would want to put solar on top of every single city building.
And home.
And home, because it just is so economically smart, if, with the tax credits to help, you know, get you there.
Yeah. But again, because
Do it before July.
Yeah, because of sunset, you know, we essentially, and we'll talk about a proposed schedule to start, you know, earlier so that we could take advantage of this, but that's all factored, I believe, into what Jack's calculations are later. And that's why we put solar in, because we wanted to kind of give the full picture. The last one is the utility rebate, which is, we're targeting a very energy-efficient building at 25 BTU per square foot per year. Now, the more efficient we can make this building, say we hit 20, the less solar we need to buy. So there's this, this effect that says, the more efficient your building is, the less energy you have to produce. So it's kind of this great way that we can bring the cost down. So that's something that, depending on how we move forward, if we move forward with this project in that manner, we will continue to try to keep making the building as energy-efficient so that we can also bring the price down of the solar.
But that'll include, you know, envelope upgrades too. So we'll put in triple-pane windows and extra insulation in the roof in order to keep the, you know, EUI of the building down as much as possible.
And all that is factored in right now to this. So we are targeting that 25, and RFS believes that we should easily be able to hit that with geothermal, and the way we're going. So we wanted to talk to you about early bid packages. This is something I don't know if we've talked about too much, but again, the cost of waiting has its price, as we've kind of seen for a while now. Escalation is typically about 3% per year, so that's what Harvey's been carrying. Right now, we've been, you know, once the cost estimate came in, we sat down with Harvey, we said, what can we do to try to offset some of that escalation? And they said, well, if you can get us the drawings by April of next year, and I'll go into some of the scenarios in one second, and start, we can do what's called an early bid package. It doesn't mean we're done with our design drawings, it just means we're about 60% done, and we can release ground improvements, we can release the foundation steel, and in this case, we would potentially, if you had solar, we would ask them to buy that 10% of solar, because that's what locks you into the rebates. That gets them started, because the second they start construction, 30 months from then is essentially when they're, they can finish the project. We also escalate to midpoint in construction when we're doing all our estimates. So this $2 million represents a six-month savings on the schedule by being able to start in April of next year at a 60%. So this came, this can come off the top of the, come off of the 171 if we're able to kind of keep moving right now and hit that target, give us enough time to get the drawings together, and that's what, as a team, we've been talking about internally and been committed to it if possible.
Just a quick question. So to clarify, that, that roughly $2 million is the savings, not what we anticipate the early bid package to be as a total?
Correct.
Okay.
That is a savings, and it's, it's calculated at 1.5%, because it's six months, which is half of the year's escalation, times whatever your ultimate building cost is. So if you value engineer tonight and you take out $5 million, that will go down 1.5% of that $5 million. So that is a number that goes up and down, because it's just a 1.5% multiplier.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So now let's look at timeline and cost impact. So what I've been talking about is the early bid package. So the first column you're looking at is the October decision. So this is, HMFH, we actually would need to start our construction documents as soon as possible, so we could talk a little bit more about how that might happen before you guys decide to go forward one way or the other, however you're going to make your decisions. But if we can start our documents sometime in September, that would allow us to have our drawings ready for the early construction start, which is April of '26. With that schedule, we project that our actual drawing sets would be completed by July of '26, and that's when Harvey would bid out the rest of the job. That means that construction would then be complete again 30 months from April, which is October of 2028, which gives you an occupancy, it would be a mid-year in your holiday break of '28, '29, right? So this is December '28, January of '29. After that, you still would have demo, and then your fields, and we project fields 100% complete by 2030, fall of 2030, you would have all your fields and everything, but your students would have already been in for a year and a half before those fields are complete. So this is the quickest way to get you in, it saves you that extra $2 million, and it keeps the project moving. Should the decision we just essentially put into March, which is just to kind of say, you know, it might take time, we know that there's got to be community hearings, there's got to be things, so sometimes it's hard to move these things forward. But if we were starting in March, we would start the construction documents again in, in April, right after that happened. There's no really any reason for an early bid package in this one, being when you start in April, if we, how do I say, if we were starting in April, we're not going to, we're not going to advance the time in which we can put foundations in in spring.
Well, we wouldn't be done until February, so if you get early bid packages and the ground is frozen, it doesn't really help you, because they can't really start, you know, site prep, and they can't put the rammed aggregate piers in, so in this case, the schedule doesn't pan out for it to be appropriate.
Thank you. God, couldn't get that out. So this one, again, would start construction June, 30 years, 30 months later would be December of '29.
30.
I know, right? Which means you would be occupying your building in February break of 2030, or at that point, you might just wait another four months and do it over the summer, depending on how much you can get in. So, and then again, demo, fields, fields would open fall of 2031 or spring of 2032 is what would be projected in that schedule.
Moving over the holiday break isn't ideal, but if you're buying a lot of new furniture and technology for the new building, you can have that in place. So really, all you'd have to do, and probably Jake can speak to this, because he's done it before, is have your teachers packed and move their stuff over. So it's more doable, because you get a little more time than the February break to do it.
Yeah. It's a good way to say that the teachers, you only can bring what's necessary. That's always the challenge.
But then, you know, it's worthwhile.
You'll have to figure out the spectrum on that one, right?
Well, the school board can adjust holiday break by a few days.
There you go. Which is what I think they did at Worcester River.
Yeah, you just map things out. For example, like the units, you know, Linda does, say she does certain books in the fall and she's done that. We can pack that stuff and have it in the new building because she's not going to use it in the spring.
And then you can stop maintaining runlet at that point too. So it's probably worth a little bit of pain to move over the holiday break and not have to keep.
Not have to pay the energy bill for the winter.
There you go. Smart. Okay. So just a quick recap. If you were to add up all of the post-construction rebates, credits and potential early bid package, there's about $13 million in tax credits or starting early that you guys can take advantage of.
So you don't get the state funding, but there is the federal funding and the starting early bonus to try to take the curse off that.
Yep. And I'm going to turn it over to Jack now to tell you exactly what you guys have been waiting for, which is the tax impact.
So this is a similar slide that we did back in January. And I put just in this two scenarios. If you took the rebates you saw tonight, we subtract out contingency, furniture, fixtures and equipment, that's what FFE is. Sorry, I didn't type it out. And technology that reduces by 26 million from that 171. The board uses its facility and renovation trust fund to mitigate the tax impact, which is something we've always been doing. That account at the end of this year will have $15 million in it. So it's not like it's just a couple of dollars. There's something there to help mitigate those early years. The amount that you're seeing here is before any reductions or value engineering that you may choose to do. Meaning auditoriums, the type of flooring, the type of wall that's in, in the building that you'll see tonight. So everything after this, because I, we've built it from the max and it's all but down. We did not want to have something where if you click on this, it goes up. We figure we're trying to represent what you've heard over the years of what the community input was of, this is what everybody wanted. This is the number. And now it's time to do what you did at the broken ground site. Value it down and come down to a number that you can feel comfortable with. So the reason why I'm taking out those numbers and coming down to that is the rebates we anticipate, it's already expected to be the net of that. So the cost of doing the canopy for 5.7 million and then taking out the rebate, the cost is already built into the 144. But when I did the financing for the three elementary schools, I took out the contingency, FFNE and technology. That's why we went from 62 and a half million to 55. And what we did is that was done for a couple of reasons. One was to hedge our bet that when we actually go from budget to actual, we'll be able to run the project. Two, I had him, Matt Cashman, in case the cameras don't catch that. So I knew that. And three, I didn't want to finance technology for 30 years because I don't know of anybody who has a phone around here. But if you've had the same phone for 30 years, you probably have a rotary dial. But we, what we would look at is doing short-term financing. The other thing we'll be eligible for at the time this school would come online is category two financing. So 60% of the infrastructure and technology that would be need would be under category two for E rate. So I'm looking at, we're probably, and we also also have a funding mechanism every year in our general fund. So why would I put in 30 years, the 2.6 million in technology, 1.4 million in furniture? I might have those reversed at the moment. So I figure we'll do short-term financing for that. That's how I got down to the
So the costs are still there. They just might come out of other pockets.
They might come out of other pockets where you have been building your general fund and I'm double bed budgeting them in a way. And I'm financing realistic life rather than, oh, let's finance these for 30 years. So that's how I come to the 144. That impact is a 65 cents per thousand, where the first year, a $228 increase or 57 per quarter. Because in Concord, they take out the taxes quarterly. Then once it's at that 228, next year it's 221. It's not 221 plus 228. Once you've set that threshold, then it goes nowhere but this way. So that is the 144. When you go over to 2025C, that is where I just took the rebates, which was the 13 million. I left the contingency, furniture, technology in there just to give you field goal posts to kind of work with. Again, you're going to use the facility trust fund. This is before any value engineering or reductions. That comes to 158 million. So that's 87 cents per thousand. Or your 1305 or $76.25 per quarter. Next year, that 305 now is 298. But again, you've already embedded it into the tax rate because it went up. Now you're just going to start going down. And the advantage of doing, when you bond this at all at one time, is once you set that, it goes nowhere but down. Where we're talking about today, when you get into renovations, and if it's, if that was even possible based on the new information we hear, you're going to borrow at bits at a time. And with the bonds, you have to spend money, X amount of dollars in certain phrases. You can't just bond it and say, all right, for 10 years, I'll hold on to that money without spending it. You have to spend it. So you do a roof and you do an HVAC, which probably couldn't be done in the summer, although you did pretty good this summer. Although runlet's a different animal. And then you get into electric, it's probably going to be multi-year. So you do that. The next time you hit it, there's going to be cost escalations, as you know, then you bond that. So that renovation cycle is this way. New and purchase is that way in my, is the way I see it.
And this is just your only first take at this. My understanding is when you did the elementary schools, you kept
29 different versions.
And they kept getting better, right?
Oh, they will get better. Now I'm starting to get the stuff I want to do now that you might be past your site stuff. I hope.
So Jack, for the benefit of those at home and anyone here who just needs a little bit of clarification, what you're saying is taxes would go up $228 when we started this.
On a $350,000
Or three, oh yeah, or 305.
If I do nothing more, that's what we would anticipate. And that's assuming
But that, the following year, it's not going to go up another 221. In fact, that portion will actually come down.
If I isolate that, yeah, the schedule is every year that goes down. It's $300 and then the next year it's not 300, it's 298. But you've already set that bar. That's the new number.
Right. So taxes would take a one-time increase. But not increase to, for this project at all, just actually a little bit.
No. And that's why I've always said to you
Gradually come down.
I always worry about your operating expenses, not your capital, because as soon as you lock in, it goes down.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a quick question strictly for clarification for the folks at home and for us. The number that you're presenting us with contingency rebates, FFE, this 225B, 144 million is the cheapest this school will ever be, correct? Well, or unless they come in, I mean
Remember, you're setting a budget. Once you target your budget, our goal will be, our goal collectively will be to go down further.
I agree. And I know that you will. And we did with the elementary schools, that was top-notch work. But from a planning perspective, the numbers that you show us will realistically never get smaller than this, correct?
I think what you're asking
Yeah, thank you. Clarify.
The longer we wait
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
If we did, if he presented this to us in a year, it would be
Thank you.
More.
Thank you. Three months.
Six months, it's 2 million more.
Yeah, exactly. I just wanted to
Four million in a year, more.
Yeah, exactly. So just for when we're Yeah, does everyone hear that? It's an important point to drive home because there's always going to be a sting of a tax increase. None of it ever feels good. But like, what hill do you want to die on, man? Like, we need a new school. We're just like at the point where it's like, make a decision or hit crisis point, right?
Right, Pam?
Thank you. This is not the totality of the school tax portion of the local property tax bill, right? So this is in addition to what
Whatever, salaries, benefits, utilities, all that would be. That's correct. Yep.
So this is on top of that.
So budget meetings will be wicked fun during this time.
Just, again, for the people who are watching, this is more.
This is the, yeah, this is just the capital side of your budget.
Just to have a new school built.
Just a question. So on the, the left-hand 2025B, you mentioned you pulled contingency out. How are you going to manage that?
Well, again, if we're going to need money, we're figuring, we're going to need it more towards the end of the project than in the beginning of the project. So the cash flow will be there because we'll do the big bond upfront. There's a $9.7 million contingency. If we go to go through all that, we probably didn't plan too well. To be frank. So knowing how little we used 15 years ago and how much planning is going into this. If we need it, we'll do short-term bond anticipation notes. And I'm also trying to anticipate savings when we actually go from budget to actual. You know, being able to buy and do the things we've been able to do historically.
So just to be clear, the, generally your contingency cost is a percentage of the total building cost. So it's a number that is, it's there, it's hard to pin down because you don't know what you don't know.
Yep.
So you've got a plan to deal with the things that may come up, understanding that the owner's contingency are things that are different than the contingencies you see elsewhere that will come up into the construction.
Correct. There's 5% for, for us and then 2% for the OP, the project construction manager.
Right. So and that's, that's a distinction
Opposite, opposite, sorry.
It's sometimes hard to follow because in, in most people, contingency, contingency. But there are some things that the construction manager's planning on possibly having to deal with versus the district, which would be changes in design or things like that.
Yep, correct.
So I can add to that. So the contingency that Jack is removing to get to that number is not removed from the project as he's indicated. It's just going to be allocated at a later date with a different funding source. But to talk specifically about the construction manager's contingency, we carry that at GMP. That's not taking that away. So that, that is in place for the project and for all of us to ensure that when we go to a GMP guarantee maximum price, we have monies in there to allocate for those unforeseen, even on the construction side of things. So not the owners. This is completely independent of that.
Two, two separate, two separate contingencies that we'll see in the total project cost, but they cover two different things.
Different avenues of, of being able to fund, yes.
I think this is more about what we would bond than the total potential project cost. Although we would hope that we can get, you know, now that we've, we've found the sand already, we can get away with how too many extra challenges. I think, what would be the energy savings on an annual basis?
So we've done a, Runlet last year used $435,000 between natural gas and electric. So we've done a quick chart that if we did a simple, simple payback, I think we're at what, 15 years, including interest on the, on the debt, that we would pay on that savings if it was a net zero building. We took 435,000, escalated it one and a half percent and then took our interest, totaled it and then looked at the buyback. It's about 15 years when that portion of it is paid off.
There would be savings in the general fund.
Yes, that would be the hope.
And then every year after that, when you take those savings, it's, I think it was around, by year 26, there was another four and a half million dollars that would be in potentially saved.
So the 158, if we're just looking at the rebates only, is sort of what the price is if we make no changes, if we change sign. That's the next question, I think, right? Is what are the options that we can, what can we look at?
Yeah. And just so you know, both calculations here are the, are the total cost of 171 million dollars. It's just what Jack takes out versus not take out. So, yeah, so both of these options are kind of a low and a high range depending on how you guys feel comfortable financing your project.
All right, so And before we get to that, I'll just mention some of the other things is because you have the money you have in your fund. With those tax credits, we've gone to the lower end, which is what, 30%, 28 and a half, 30% rebate from the federal government. You could get as high as 40. We didn't go that high, only because what happens if you use a tax exempt bond, you get the lower return. If you use a taxable bond, it can go higher. So we will work all that out with the financial company that we use, which is what I've used to do, get to this. So there could be potentially more, but we're trying to play it as conservative as we can.
And that also includes local materials. So the more local you can buy solar panels, the more those multipliers go up. And that also works for geothermal too. And on the geothermal side, you can, the more local you can get, there are more local, there are more ability to get local materials on geothermal side. So that tax credit could potentially go up. So we tried to do a very conservative number in terms of keeping it around the 30%, which is, we think is pretty much the easier, easier target to ensure.
And I think before you start, any comment I'd say from the experience we had was looking at items that once you make the decision, they're not easy to put back in. Versus items that, yeah, I feel comfortable cutting this, but when we bids come in and everything comes back, let's add that back. And I'll give you two examples. When we did the elementaries, there was VCT tile, if I'm not mistaken, in that building. We wound up putting a rubberized flooring because it was greener, it was easier to clean, it was softer on the teachers' backs for standing. And the cleaning, you don't have to get in all the cleaning. The second was the roof. We went from EPDM to PVC roofing. I mean, that was, I think all of it was about an $800,000 adjustment back then. But we were running so well, we added those back in and they were easy changes early on. If you get rid of the auditorium now, it's not something you can say, hey, we're doing pretty well, let's add that back in. And that's not an option. Okay, just so you know.
We'll tell you which, which options you have, you know, if something can be an add alternate, we'll let you know that. Things like fields, you could put in the add alternate category because at the end, hopefully your contingency is still left and then you can put the field in.
Okay. So just to kind of set up how, how this can work, and again, we'll go slow or as quick, however you guys want, as we go down each of these items. We've categorized the, the type of value engineering that could take place. And we've also have some graphics we've prepared for ones that we felt might need some explanation or, or, you know, like if we are going to take away the auditorium, what is it going to look like? Is the floor plan going to look like? So we have, so we'll have to go back and forth between this sheet and the other sheet. It's a very simple sheet. I think you saw it last time we did this exercise. You can say yes. If you do yes, it puts into the VE. If you say you want an add alternate, it should go into the add alternate category too, but it'll take it away. We'll take it as a VE, but also put it the add alternate. So at the end, you can kind of have a running total of where you are and we can go from there. So why don't we, you guys can let me know how you want to do it, but if I go through each of them and if they need more explanation, we can jump to a graphic. Or if you feel like you understand it, we can move on to the next one. Does that make sense? The first one, on the sloped roofs, you know, you saw the image that there's sloped roofs that we're planning to put solar panels on. You could turn those from a metal standing seam to an architectural asphalt shingle. Now, if you are going with solar, this is one we probably wouldn't recommend. And the reason being is when you have asphalt, you're going to have to penetrate the asphalt with the solar panels. But when you have a metal standing seam, they make clips that allow the, the solar panels just to clip on to. So there's no penetration of the actual roof in that case.
What is the lifespan of a metal roof versus an asphalt roof?
Yeah. And then architectural shingles, I think they're probably 25 years-ish. And the metal is, is much longer. I don't, I think
Close to 50.
50, yeah. So, and that would
Different manufacturers will have different warranties, but essentially 25 year for asphalt, 50 year for a metal roof.
Yeah. And this would again, only be on the sloped roofs. All the flat roofs would be the, probably the TPC or PVC roof. And those can, the metal panels just sit on those because it's a, it's not a sloped roof, so they just have to sit on those.
So do you folks have a thought on metal versus shingles on the committee?
I've always got an opinion.
I mean, this is, obviously the board is going to make the ultimate decisions, but, but what, you know, I, I think the cost over 50 years is probably, to me, is worth keeping the metal roof, but others.
May I agree with that, but I'd like to hear what Mr. Cashman has to say.
Yeah. I mean, we have asphalt shingles on, on Runlet right now. They do have a 25 to 30 year warranty. I was just talking to Jay over at the COP. You've had to, what was 1990? I was just talking to Jay over at the COP, you've had to, what was nineteen ninety? Eighty, eighty-nine. So they've had to apply to their metal roofs, almost like a Rhino liner applicant.
It was a, a liquid coating.
I think, I think as we, as we get into that, there might be ways where the clip-on portion for the solar panels could be at the fastening section and the rest of it is asphalt shingles. I guess that, at the end of the day, it's almost a million bucks, and I think that that's something we should, we should highly consider, maybe VEing out. I'd be okay with architectural shingles. I would just wanna make sure that we're very careful during construction on how we penetrate that roof and bond around it, if you will, the fasteners.
Mr. Burgess.
Would that be a, a line that would be maybe appropriate to look at an add alt, because it would be something that perhaps you could look at down the road a little bit? Obviously, absent the conversation about solar. I won't say the roof's the last thing that goes on, but it's a little bit further away than some of the other big decisions.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I think an add alternate is perfectly reasonable at this point, and then we can assess it. We can reassess every add alternate at any of the next cost estimates, so at sixty percent construction, probably do another cost estimate to confirm we're on track. And at that point, we can see where we are and see if it makes sense to bring it back. Or again, if solar is gonna happen and we talk to asphalt manufacturers and we say, hey, you know, how does this system over time, you know, will you still warranty this roof? You know, with all the potential penetrations happening. So, so there's just more conversations that can happen. So I would say I wouldn't get rid of it because add alternate doesn't, it reduces from your budget, but it doesn't really take it out of the project.
So add alternate, everyone? Consensus? I'm sorry.
I do have a question.
Yep.
So we should probably know what it will cost in twenty-five years to replace the shingles on a slant and remove the solar panels. So there is, like, how much is that million-dollar savings when you factor in replacing the shingles on a slant under solar panels? So I think that's an important number to have, unless it's been factored in.
So it hasn't, but so, so to answer some of that, there's an argument to be made that when you're not exposing the asphalt roof to solar, because it's covered by solar panels, its lifespan actually increases. So the reality of you replacing your twenty-five-year roof in twenty-five years goes down drastically because of its non-exposure to UV. So yes, it's a twenty-five-year warranty, which is probably at the end of the day what they're gonna write. But the reality is, is you have an opportunity not to have that material exposed to UV and degradation. So there's perimeter portions that aren't covered that you'd have to address, but those are a lot more accessible than the ones that aren't. So we haven't done that total cost analysis, that's a whole nother category of analysis, but that's what would ultimately happen.
Uh, let her go first.
So my question is with asphalt, asphalt shingles, you can replace the portion, you know, worn out here, you can replace the portion. What's the process of replacing a metal roof? Do you, is it an entirety or are they huge sheets of metal that need to be replaced? So now you're looking at, you have to replace a whole roof, you can't just replace.
Depending on where the damage or whatever it is that you're replacing, there are, there is ways in which you can peel it back to, to a point, so you don't have to do the whole thing. But typically, those materials will degrade uniformly except for angles to the sun and how the sun moves around the building, all that. But, but the reality is, the south-facing wall is the one, or roof is gonna be the one that gets the most exposure.
Yeah.
That whole south face is gonna have the same amount of exposure, so that whole south face will be replaced at the same time. But if you had a damage or something like that, there is means in which you can take out components of metals, because it's all fasteners, it's actually pretty easy to take apart. So you could find a way to systematically get back to that point and replace it. So it's not a wholesale.
One other thing to consider, solar panels typically have a lifespan of around twenty-five years as well. But that doesn't mean solar panels just stop working after twenty-five years. It just means after twenty-five years, they start to lose some of their efficiency. So it could be two percent, right? So it, it might not be, it's not gonna be forty percent after year twenty-five, your solar panels are gonna go forty percent. It might be two percent, and then they'll start to slowly go down from there. So you'll still be making that money, which if it's net zero, you'll still be making it. However, that's just something to consider too, it's, it's always kind of mirroring the two.
And a counterpoint to that is that, those are estimates based on solar panels from, that were manufactured ten, fifteen, and twenty years ago. The solar panels that are being manufactured now have, have longer lifespans and less reduction in efficiency.
We even had a project where within the two years from when we planned the project to build the project, the efficiency of the solar panels went up tremendously. So that we went from net zero school to a net positive school and all by keeping it just on the roof, right? So, you know, in two years, the technology theoretically would be better, so when you're actually bidding out the solar panels or, you know, it might be more efficient.
So add alternate on the, I think we're, we have consensus on that?
All right, so, just so you, just not to be, just so it makes sense.
Like thirty-seven items, keep that in mind.
There's thirty-seven?
We'll go, we'll go through quicker on mostly. Just so it doesn't confuse.
That's true.
If it has, I have to do yes and add alternate in order to take it out of the base, but so, but if it's add alternate, it's an add alternate. The next, at the beginning, the entry of the school, you have that long canopy, and I'll just quickly show where that is. That's right here and here, so you would still maintain the canopy outside the main entrance, but there was an extended canopy that connected the two sides of campus for where the drop-offs would happen, so kids could, you know, walk through. If you were to VE that, that's around two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Great. Yeah, add alternate, for sure.
Add alternate consensus?
Add alternate, yeah. Definitely.
Delete bleachers and multipurpose room. So this is an all PE room, they did talk about having wrestling meets and things in there, so that's why bleachers were requested initially. It's not a big ticket item, but, you know, we were going through this just looking for anything that wouldn't impact the school, you could buy them at a later date. You know, it's not something you can't purchase later. So that's why we're, we looked at that as an option. But again, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, add alternate.
Add alternate.
Yeah.
Anything that can come up.
If anybody wants to say no, say no. But Liz and I are gonna take care of this list right now.
Yeah, the next one, I don't have a drawing, but reduce tile height at corridors to four feet. So right now, we have it up to seven feet, so you're kind of taking it down. We do this a lot in elementary schools, they'll go lower because kids are smaller. As the kids are growing in middle schools, they rub their backpacks, they touch it, so that's right, it's just a maintenance item at that point. There's more paint, subjectable, but for fifty-three thousand dollars, it's kind of a small dollar amount.
Can I just ask, why tiles at all?
Why, I'm sorry, what?
Why have tiles at all?
It just, yeah, protection.
Protects the walls, instead of, you know, if you bang into the wall, then you have to repair the drywall.
Okay.
This just keeps it.
It's easier to clean too.
Yeah, the amount of kids that lean against walls, put their hands on walls.
Oh, I know they put their hands on all the stuff.
Well, that's the thing, is you can bleach it so much easier than like, you can't really bleach this.
Yeah.
I, I think that's natural. Would leave that at this point? I don't know, I would not take that deletion.
The height?
I think at, at all.
Four feet, well, that's plenty of tile.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's not backpack height for a middle schooler.
Yeah, for a middle schooler, that's not very high.
Middle schoolers have quite a range.
Could someone guess, what does that look like?
What?
Four feet's about that out with.
Yeah, right over here.
Oh, I see, so some kids are gonna come down the hallway with their hand and wipe the whole thing away.
Or if they're gonna bang into something.
They're like, they're back to wraps.
Look at that, look at that cheap contractor.
Hey!
Right there, roughly the bottom of the toe.
Do you wanna carry your backpack?
I think four feet's enough.
You can put it as an add.
Add.
Yeah, let's add alternate.
Add.
We like the add alternates.
One and down.
Add, add that before the canopy.
Show seven. You currently have two elevators in your school, I can show this real quick. You have one here and one right in the center, so they're, they're pretty much serving the same area. This one comes up right where the gym is on the second floor, so it's a little bit more central. But you do have a, a walkway that takes you right to the gym from this elevator too. So with a compact school like this and a central elevator, it almost seems like a redundancy to have two elevators, which is why we put it on, but.
Remember, we had the, the main elevator that's in the pod side closer to the main entrance at one point.
Used to be over here.
And we talked about this and we moved it more centrally located so that you could potentially reduce one. It's a pretty big ticket item.
How many, six person?
They're very big.
They're usually like thirty-five hundred pounds, maybe forty-five if it's gonna go to the roof, so that's probably ten.
People, yeah, ten.
Yeah, you typically wouldn't have that many people in there just because it's used for accessibility, you know, kid on crutches, things like that.
Yeah, we definitely would not allow like ten kids to go in and go there by themselves.
In an emergency.
Well, they wouldn't be working in an emergency though.
So I think this is tied pretty much to, to number six.
I do too.
So I think we probably should talk about this together.
Okay, so number six would be delete the level-two ramp and platform. This includes a twenty-two-hundred square foot reduction, which is also why you're seeing a large amount, and I'll go back to here. So this area right here is where you have the ramp that we talked about for accessibility that gets you from the first floor to the second floor. It also, you can see it, it takes up a lot of space, so what we'd be proposing that if you took out the ramp, we would take this whole wing right here and bring it down to make this twenty-two-hundred square feet less. And that would just make, make your building a little more compact, but it takes a big chunk of volume in that space because it is the main street.
And this is not a like add alternate, this is a.
This is a one or the other.
I, I will say that we heard from, you know, a very well, very thoughtful group of residents about the importance of having a ramp and making, you know, not isolating students in elevators if we could avoid it. So I would not move it now, but that's me. Co-sign.
I, I would not, I would not remove it now for that reason, but then also for another reason. We also heard from a group of people who are concerned that our gym is on the second floor and that how would they get out? Well, the high school gym is essentially on the second floor right now too, but it's a ramp that comes down, that it's an external ramp, it's outside, but it's essentially a ramp. This provides an inside ramp that in a, you know, in an emergency, to your point, you know, elevators fail, but ramps don't fail. So, you know, I would be more in favor of eliminating one of the elevators and keeping the ramp. But anybody else?
We also moved the art rooms down to the second floor as well, so now all of the specials are accessible from that level. So your pods go up three floors, but they're all the same layout. So depending on who's in what pod each year, you could manipulate it to, you know, not have someone that needed the ramp or the elevator to be on the third floor.
Potentially.
Are there guidelines around how many elevators or square feet of access you need based on the number of students? You know, is there a, like, I, I think it's special and I think of, you know, Americans with Disabilities Act and all that sort of stuff, there isn't a formula responsible?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Can we ask, can we ask Mr. Richard, how many kids? I mean, we have a school now.
Yep.
And we have, and, or Dr. Herbert, because he has experience at the high school. We have a school with elevators and we have kids that require elevators. What is our anecdotal numbers right now and, and ability to do that?
I mean, it fluctuates because we do middle school, we have a lot, it's variable in terms of kids who are on crutches and things like that. And, you know, one of the things I think about even this elevator, you know, from a historical perspective, like, when we make these types of decisions, are people twenty years down the road or even fifteen gonna say, geez, I wish we had really kept that second elevator? And I know it's, it's expensive, but just, that's kind of how I look at things, and I think more access we can have to different areas, and I know it's, again, I know I'm being repetitive, it's very expensive, but I do wonder about things like that. Are people gonna, fifteen years down the road, see, geez, I really wish we had put that elevator, second elevator in for two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars? Because once we remove it, then it's too late then, you know.
I think of elevators also serve, you know, custodial staff, all that sort of stuff.
Supplies, all different types of things.
Over here, maybe, maybe an elevator thirty feet away seems close in the whole building, but if you have to bring stuff someplace.
Open house, right? Like when we had open house last night, I think about ADA compliance, you know, for grandparents who are visiting. So I think the more access we have for people, the better.
Are there just the two elevators at Concord High? There are three, two in the west building? Oh, no, two in the east.
There are two in the west building and technically two in the east building. We have one that from the ground floor up for food services that stops like outside of Gratitude Cafe.
And then one at the other end.
So, and I, I would say at Concord High, now it's double the number of students and, you know, quite a few more staff than Runlet. But at Concord High, those three elevators are going all day long, and it's students with, you know, with mobility needs, crutches. Jay's sports program's booming just like ours, and, and it's like things happen, injuries happen.
I have to say that one day last year, I was at the opening of Runlet and the number of kids who walked in on crutches or with casts.
That's the truth.
It was amazing, it was like one out of every eight kids.
Stuff happens.
I will say this, that probably the three elevators you have, just that one elevator would eat the three elevators you have, because they're so tiny. Even that elevator you have, the other one you have.
That is part of the reason why they're.
They're so small, but.
So consensus on the ramp is leave in?
Yes.
And elevator, leave it in for now?
Yeah.
Leave it in? Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next two items are related, so we can talk about them together again. CLT is cross-laminated timber and mass timber beams. So in that same cafeteria area right now, we have been showing renderings for, you know, many months that show that just this area being a, the ceiling, the underside of the ceiling and beams like this being wood to bring some warmth into the school. Because a lot of times wood just brings that warmth into the school. We isolate it because we know it's more expensive, so we try to put it where it's most impactful, and this would be, every kid would be in the space, coming in the space daily. So there's just a kind of a connection back to nature, but also just brings a little more warmth into that space. But again, it is, it is pricey, so we wanted to make sure we put that on the list for you guys to look at. Total between the two would be about three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Now, there are some potential grants available, actually, that Linda afforded to us that we are exploring. So I, you know, we'd like to pursue that a little further.
Um, it's, has to do with basically development of the northeastern United States. It's a federal program, federal grants, and there were a few different ones, one of which was using timber from the area and getting grants for that.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so add alternate.
So this one, yeah, we could do an add alternate. The structural package would, if we do move this project forward, would be one of the earlier packages we release. So it would be, it would be a decision you would have to make early on in the beginning of next year, once we kind of get more information on the grant, whether or not we can get it or not, and, you know, if you don't have the budgets, they can't definitely.
Maybe a little earlier than that, so we can explore the grant and see if we can get it in the next go-around, but I think we will have to make a decision on that sooner than later because it has to be engineered.
We can get Ms. Desmond on that, right?
Do we have, do we have, do we have a rendering or a drawing or a tech, in one of our packets that shows this area and architectural?
We can bring it to the board meeting.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I don't need it right now, I just was curious because people are gonna say, what do we get or what do we take away? And I just thought a visual would be helpful.
We can bring visuals of what it would look like in a space, you know, we could bring kind of a photograph of it and compare it to what you would be getting.
Perfect. Don't spend a lot of money on that, but bring it.
Mr. Cashman.
Okay.
So question, in the three elementaries that you designed, there's tons of exposed steel, and we use that as a teaching function.
Yep.
Which still is pretty neat. So we're not sacrificing structure, right? With the wood over, it's more aesthetics.
You'll still see the exposed structure in other parts of this building, the steel structure that is. It would be a good teaching tool to say to the kids, you can frame a building with timber, or you could frame a building with steel potentially, right?
I mean, the other advantage of wood is it's less carbon intensive, so. But all of, all of our steel is spray fire approved, for, you know, we have a one-hour rating on the workers.
Sure, okay.
You'll see the joists in the gym.
And we have some exposed braces throughout the building too, so, and those don't need to be fireproofed.
I'm in the, I'm in the wood is warmth camp. Let's do everything we can to make sure that there's, there's wood. That, that's gonna keep the kids' hearts warm for learning.
The next two items are, are big items, obviously, because this is the solar. You can see mounting solar on the roof is much, much less expensive than putting it on solar canopies. And that's because you don't have to build the foundations, the structure of the roof or the canopy to put the roof on like you would in, in a canopy setting. So this is what, the total of the seven million dollars is what we were calculating the grant off of. off of. And if I scroll way to the bottom, if you were to keep just the roof, you would still get a, almost a half a million dollars back. If you were to do both, we're looking at a total of two million dollars back. And the reason is the whole structure is also part of that IRA rebate money. So that's why you get more money, if you put it on a canopy, you get more money back is because you're counting for all that footing, all the steel, all of that goes there.
The roof doesn't count towards that too because you're putting on?
I know, we've, we've been trying to think about it. Could you give the whole building discounted? But that, they, they don't.
The projects we did in our house, we put a new roof on with the solar so we could get the complete discount. Why does that not apply to the school?
Continue to look into that. We, we don't have, we haven't, because the IRA was here and it went so quick, we didn't have a project go through solar yet. So all of that is with the tax. Yeah, all of that's with the tax consultant and how they interpret what the, what the law says. And the more we can put in.
This is the conservative.
This is the conservative measure. The other pieces, designer services are, are also discounted. There's debate on whether that's the whole fee or is that a portion of the fee? So, you know, as we get into it and the more we're tracking it and working with the tax advisor, we'll keep honing in and trying to just increase that federal ground as much as possible.
If we don't include the canopies, we are not a net zero building.
Correct.
Correct. If you do it on just the roof, we're projecting about fifty percent of your utility cost.
And we have to make a decision on the solar relatively early because the tax credits are going away.
You have to purchase about, I think it's called ten percent. Is it, they're saying five right now, but we're going to recommend ten percent of the total cost of your solar installation. So you can't, so if you purchase, say, five-hundred-thousand, that would mean your total cost could be five million. So you wouldn't hit it. So actually, I misspoke before. It should be seven-hundred-thousand, be ten percent of seven million. If the solar comes in less than that, you, you've purchased more, so you're safe. If it comes in at eight, then you don't get that extra million, might not, not qualify.
But you could also purchase that, right? And then decide.
Later, yeah.
Later, that you're not going to put the canopies in, that you're just going to use the roof and that ten percent that you purchased can go on the roof.
Correct.
I think.
Yeah, so there's not much risk there in, in terms of what Tina said.
So where are some of the solar?
Oh, I'm pro-solar.
Yeah.
I'm pro-solar all the way. I'd like to see the fifteen years be without a utility bill.
Yeah, I say whatever makes us net zero, we should probably be keeping.
I'm just going to add, I mean, teaching kids about sustainability is such a valuable lesson for middle school kids and all that.
They pick up on this stuff, man.
Well, to see that at Oyster River, to be able to walk into Oyster River Middle School and see the like video screens on the wall showing how much energy is used in the moment and how much is, you know, from the solar and whatnot, is a really cool experience.
Ms. Baker?
Hi. Sorry for being late. I streamed it while cooking dinner though, I promise. I am excited to be here, even though I'm a little bit late because I specifically do want to hear from our building committee, community members about these issues because we can litigate this at our September twenty-fourth meeting as well. So I just want to make note that if you do have opinions on these things as we move through, that sometimes it's hard to overcome the board because we're very comfortable with each other, but if you have thoughts and feelings, I would love to hear them. Just making notes.
Yes. Well, I'm also pro-solar, also net zero. Definitely think this is money well invested for innumerable numbers of reasons. So better to spend the money now than to regret not having spent it later.
Even without the tax credits, this would pay for itself over time and our energy savings.
I think it was around year twenty-two without the tax credit.
Take a little longer.
Seven years. It takes longer.
Well, but let's not forget, we're going to get thirty or thirty-five years out of our asphalt shingles.
And the price of utility with you that they expect it to continue to climb.
Listen, and if we can't get a grip on ever source, we're, like, we're, we're going to be winning.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see numbers. I'm always the numbers guy. However, I'd like, be very curious as to the assumptions with regards to increasing energy costs. I think, you know, having worked in the energy field and keeping up with the news and all, energy costs are going to go up higher than the rate of inflation. Because they're going to need to replace a lot of infrastructure in both lines as well as generating capacity. And the demand is going to soar because of AI and the data centers' demand of electricity. So I would like to see some numbers on this, but I'm tending towards trying to make as much, to use, to use as much electricity as possible that we generate.
I just wanted to.
Do you have a spreadsheet on the?
Yeah, I could show just kind of the, the look, but.
You don't have to give us an idea. We would like to see.
No, we did assume a, an annual utility increase of one-point-five percent. So, you know, if you think it's more than three. You know, I think we can plug it in here. I'm not sure. It won't, the bottom lines won't show, but we need to get to the five-million-dollar mark here. So it improves by a couple of years by just putting in the cost of inflation, right? If, if utility were to go up at inflationary rates, you're at a thirteen-year payback. And then that's, you know, every year you're taking six-hundred, so it's another one point, almost one million dollars that you're adding to the bottom line down here. Oops, sorry, going all over the place, in terms of how much you're making after you break even.
One other thing I want to note, you see how he has assumed grade of four and a half percent? That's what I have on our bonds too. I use the same.
We're hoping it will be high.
Oh, that's a high number.
Yeah, so in that, so just, you know, it's simple, the interest right here, the way it was done is we took the total interest of the loan of a seven-million-dollar loan and then we just divided it and said, this is the average interest rate, just to keep it simple. And then you take year one, what you're, you're not paying in utility minus your interest, and that's your annual savings. And that's how we build it up to get to the break even number of, you know, you need five million. So once we got above five million here, we are break even.
Thank you.
With, with the tax credits, that is. Okay. All right, so we're hitting, do you guys decide on this? Are we going no or?
I think they was to leave it as it is for now. So leave them in.
We'll leave it in for now. The next three, we priced three different HVAC options against the geothermal. And again, before, we, we were always looking at for our systems because we were not sure that the geothermal tax credits were going to be in the final bill. Now that they are, you can see that it changes the, the analysis significantly. Option one, if we were to eliminate geothermal and go with air source heat pumps, which would keep an all-electric building, you would have to take out that tax credit. So the net difference is a four-point-seven-million-dollar add. Option two, if we went to a fifty percent geothermal well, fifty percent air source heat pump, you would still get a portion of that credit, which is factored in here, but it's still a four-point-one-million-dollar add. And then option three, again, eliminating geothermal altogether and go with gas boilers, you would take that eight million out, so that would net a three-million, three-point-eight million dollar add to the project. Based on the total project cost.
So does anyone want to add five million dollars?
No, thank you.
Honestly, the tax credits are significant in this realm because the, the cost of the HVAC is so significant that when you're taking thirty percent of that, you're, you're getting a significant chunk back. Okay, so we'll just go no.
My memory from the Broken Ground version was that even without the tax credits, the geothermal was a little bit cheaper.
It might have been very close. I think the long, in the long run, because of your, your lower EUI building. It also, it would, I think you would also use, lose out on the unit till if you went with the gas, because I don't think they, we'd be able to get to a twenty-five EUI building. Okay, so now we can move on to site. So site, I'll just, let me read through them and then I have a big graphic that kind of shows where they all are. The first was, is an add because it's looking to go from one of your fields and ink to go to a synthetic turf field. So that would be about a seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar add to do that. The next three, assume that you have three lawn fields and it basically says, if you were to remove one field, two fields or three field, each field is about four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars as, as grass. And you would take all that drainage, you know, like doing really nice drainage and making sure they're level fields, they would essentially just be grass, right?
But it would still, it would still slope to drain.
It would still slope to drain, yeah.
We talked to the, the civil engineers, they think they can slope it down towards Bowbrook, so it would still be a better condition than what you have today, even if, even if we just planted the grass. I'm not saying you should do it, I'm just telling you.
Just a gentle slope. These numbers also include irrigation. So the idea is if you say, we want to take out one field, leave two, we're taking out the irrigation portion of that. So I think the real field number was like three-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand. When you add in the irrigation, it comes to the four-thirty-six. So we're putting irrigation in with these fields or taking it out with these fields.
Can you, can you explain to me a little bit is that taking it out, it's grass?
Just grass slope to drain from one side all the way down. It's just sloped grass.
What is it now? Because if irrigation's only, I would expect the irrigation to be the more expensive thing. And now you're saying that, so is it better than grass or what's the difference?
It's better than grass because each field is, has a crown. So it's, each field slopes. So like the whole field is, is flat.
Well, it's crowned so that it drains off and then there's layers of sand and different types of material underneath it.
So in other words, it has far better drainage.
Also, far better longevity is.
Well, longevity and use throughout the year.
You're not going to get ponding, you know, if you don't, if you don't grade it right, you're going to get ponding in some areas. And then that's going to turn into flooding and then it's going to turn into mud. And then that area is not going to be able to grow grass because it's going to be too saturated. So it's really just grading it, putting in, again, the right soils in and sand for drainage.
So we're, in looking at Memorial Field, Memorial Field is built on top of a lake, invisible lake under the ground, but, so this is, we've had a lot of talks about crowning fields and art, artificial turf. Is the Runlet site wet? I mean, do they have big puddling fields over there all the time? Is it mucky and disgusting down there?
Yeah, we do. I mean, yeah.
Because it's on the other side now. It's near, it's on the Bowbrook side now.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we also have the field, we call it the Hundred Wing Field, that, you know, kids were on tonight.
Right, that's, that's, right, no, right. So that ponds.
That becomes an ice skating rink in the winter.
So this is where one of your fields are and would remain. This is all wetlands right here?
So we're moving it closer to the water.
So you're moving it closer to the water. So you technically, you know, and depending on the cut field of the site, you might raise the grades up a little bit higher so that you're just at a little bit higher for any kind of groundwater.
So we've had several conversations around all sorts of things pertaining to water in our district. And we were talking about Concord High School being built on top of a stream and, and how these things happen. And they happen because people try to cut costs. So in looking at all the conversation around Memorial Field and the puddling muddy swamp that the playing fields are, in nineteen-seventy-one, when it was all redone, they didn't do the irrigation. It was expensive. They just did the normal, let's slope it and let nature do its thing. And we see that it's a big disastrous mess. So I know there are a lot of people might say, okay, why are we spending all this money on fields? Well, because if their fields are in integrity, twenty years from now, they're not a mucky pond.
Oh, yes, sorry, dear.
They're not, sorry. They're not, they're, they're not a mucky pond that a group of people are going to sit in this room and say, what the heck were they thinking? Why didn't they just do it right the first time? So the PE teacher and athlete and camp director in me thinks that if we're going to put a middle school's worth of kids on a field, it should be a properly executed, drained, built field. Otherwise, it, it isn't. And we have an ice rink in the winter and unusable fields during the season.
Dust storms.
Yeah, yeah. Synthetic turf, is this like a competition level field or just sort of like, like a, one of the fields happens to be synthetic?
Yeah, one of the fields you would make synthetic and it just gives it more use, right? So when you have grass fields, depending on how, yeah, intensity.
Well, I, I understand all of that. So my, my guess, my question is, that, that's an expensive proposition right there? Is there a way that we can have games and things on it that bring revenue into the district? Like one of the conversations, again, at Memorial Field is turf fields are sought after and you can have much higher level of, of events held there and that sort of thing. I know this isn't a stadium, but is it, is it a field that would be built in such a way that we could?
Yes.
Generate revenue from it?
Yes. If, if you chose to rent it on off-hours that you're not using it, yeah, it would be used forever.
Middle school state champion.
Yeah, now what?
Lisa and then Jim and then Jake.
No to a turf field. Synthetic turf, microplastics, gross lifespan stuff.
They're not, they're not microplastics.
No, they, well, they eventually produce microplastics. Eventually, they do.
Jim and then Jake.
Okay, right now, this is another tied thing. I'm, with Barb, we're looking at Memorial Field. Memorial Field, if, if it goes through, will have three fields, two of which are currently listed as turf fields. Since that project tentatively will be completed before these fields would, I think you would still be able to use those fields for competitive events and things like that. So I would go not, I would say no on a turf field here unless we don't go forward with the renovations.
Well, that was my next question. Then I would, then I would add it. Do we need a third turf field in our community if, if two blocks away, we have two already?
Yeah. Not if they, yeah, I agree.
Well, I think there's been a lot of debate and research, you know, everywhere about field, you know, grass fields versus field turf. Candidly, the thing I like about the benefit, they do have new types of fill. I understand, appreciate Lisa's concern, but our kids are going outside every day for recess and the, and the benefit of having like a field turf is we're, we're on it, we're going to be on it every single day as long as the snow isn't there. And we're going to use it all the time. And then, as we just mentioned, there are opportunities to, you know, rent the field out to bring in revenue. And you can't do that with, depending on, you know, grass fields.
And what other potential benefit is, we wouldn't have to wait two years, a year and a half to use it. But this is not in the current budget. So this would be adding seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand. Who's Jake?
When, when would a decision need to be made on this?
Good point, yes. All the site stuff, for the most part, is into the project. You know, your, your building's out of the ground, you know what your contingency levels are, and you, you now can make a decision on if you want to spend that, spend that on upgrading. There might be a little bit of design cost to ask our landscape architect to carry the add alternate to design a synthetic turf field because they do have different drainage, they do have different requirements. So if we are going to carry it as a true add alternate where we would ask to like design it and have it bid as an add alternate, that might have, but it's, it's not a significant cost.
Is, is this turf field one of the three field? Would it be one of the three fields or are we talking about turf field and then three other fields?
It would be number fourteen on the thing I just pulled up here. So it, this field would become the turf field.
So it's three total?
Three total fields, yeah, two grass, one turf.
So on the estimate, one of those?
This one right here would be, would turn from grass to turf.
So if you go back to that estimate page?
Right, I think she's.
Then one of those four-hundred-and-thirty-six is going to go away.
Or is that already included in the cost?
The four-thirty-six is included.
Okay.
The four thirty-six is included in the cost, so that would stay, it would be a seven hundred twenty-nine. We just, we, we wouldn't be able to take one of them. Like, if you wanted to, if you wanted a turf.
One point one million dollar field.
The most you could do is this, you would have to do, you would have to leave one of these out, because you're keeping it. So you could say, we want one turf field, but we're gonna get rid of the other two grass fields. You could do that, but you can't take three grass fields and then add the turf field.
Right, that's, that's what I was asking. So it's not an additional seven hundred thirty, it's an additional three hundred?
No.
No?
It's an additional.
Okay, I don't teach math for this.
Sorry, it's, it's technically one point, it would be one point one million for a turf field. If you were, if you owned a turf field and you were gonna take it all the way out, it would've been one point one million.
So I think the consensus is, this turf field should be put aside for the moment, is what I'm hearing. Where are people on the other fields?
We have to have fields where we have like the most inclusive.
But do we need irrigation?
Yes, I would say.
Crowns, that's the.
Having lived through, looking at Memorial Field and answering the questions, how, 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 and why, 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 it's, it's, that's the integrity of the land upon which the kids will stand, and we already have issues with sandy soil. And I just think the more we can do to create stable playing fields that are not.
I, I, I'm with you, I personally think like, we could put this in an alternate list, but that's not really on us, because we're not gonna build a school that doesn't have, well, I would hope that we don't build a school that we have to fix the fields every five years, so.
Oh, I definitely think we need irrigation. If we're gonna have fields, they're gonna, otherwise, every field, I mean, even if we're a broken ground school, the fields there are all dust. You know, you can't, no one can play a sport on, can't play soccer really on a dust field, so you have to.
Does make a big difference.
All right, so the fields stay, this turf gets moved over to alternate.
Add alternate, I'm not gonna actually put yes on the turf, cause that would add, do you even know the add alternate? So, uh, but we'll say three noes here, okay. Um, the next two, let me, I'll read, again, the, I'll just read three and then we'll go to that drawing, cause it'll be easier. Um, delete basketball courts, um, remove monumental seating and stage, and we'll show you where, where those were, where that is planned right now. Uh, reduce quantity of trees by fifty percent. So the site plan I'm gonna show you already reduced it by fifty percent. So if you look at it and say, this still feels like the right amount of trees, then that's an easy one to take. Um, bec- also, trees are stuff you can fundraise for, you can add more trees later. It's, it's something you can, you can, you can do later. Um, play equipment, uh, there's a playground surface, we reduced it by twenty-five percent, that's also shown. So again, if it looks like the right amount of play equipment, play surface, that's good. The next one would be delete all play equipment. So that would be taken saying, these middle school kids, we're not gonna provide a jungle system, but we know that that was asked for, cause they, they've been looking for that kind of recess.
Sort of a natural place escape, like wooden-like structures that the kids can climb on.
And the final one is changing some of the sidewalks from concrete to asphalt. So, going through those individually, eighteen are where the two basketball courts are currently planned. So that would become grass, that would become some other landscape element that would just, you know, be there that you would still have access to, but it just wouldn't be a, a paved court with basketball hoops. Twenty-one and twenty-two, this is where that play structure is, is currently planned. So if you were to, that already reduced it by twenty-five percent, it probably used to come down to where this line is right here of, of concrete. Um, so that was the other one. In this zone, let's see if I can zoom in here, cause get a little closer. Um, you can see these benches in the back here, uh, those are the planned bench structures. And we'll see the stage is a stage right here, maybe the thing.
It's all together.
Okay, so that'd be like a planned bench stage area. The reason why it's significant, it's like three hundred thousand dollars, is it's a full foundation in concrete, and then there's like a wood topping or something that goes on top of it. So it's a pretty substantial, very heavy duty, will last, won't, won't tear, you know, wear down over time. And that's why it's very substantial in cost. Um, and then the, the sidewalks changing from concrete everywhere in this light grayish, tannish color are where we are planning to keep concrete sidewalks. And then areas like here, all the paths to the school, um, areas down here would all be the asphalt. Areas up here, anything in gray would be asphalt sidewalks instead.
So you have the concrete right in front of the asphalt.
You keep the concrete in front of the school where it's most of the wear and tear, when you're salting, when you're clearing snow, you know, those are the areas that you're really gonna have the, the most, um, most traction, so we would recommend keeping it there. And then this whole surface right here is, is concrete in the begin, in the front of the school. And it's just using different textured concrete, different stamp patterns, things that make that feel more inviting and nice, but it's not adding cost to do those different things. Or it's adding minimal costs, which you wouldn't really see a lot of if you just put it all there. Um, so going back, unless people have questions, I can just show the dollars for each. Again, basketball courts about two hundred and eighteen thousand, the monumental stage is around three hundred sixty-five. Reducing the, oh, we didn't look at the trees, let's look at the trees. So you're still getting a, a good amount of trees and coverage in the site. Um, it's just more sparse, you know, there might've been, uh, this might've been built in a little bit thicker before. So, if that feels like the right amount of trees, I think we're meeting with, we're meeting all the guidelines that are for the, anything over like, um, parking structures, or parking structures, but parking lots.
Well, if you put, if you put those solar canopies in that parking lot, you're probably gonna take out some of those trees.
Move them elsewhere.
Right, are the trees along that property line, those are the existing trees, right?
So the graphic is a little bit different.
Yeah.
Along the property line.
Along the Spring Street.
Oh, everything faded, yeah.
So, right, the graphic along, those trees along the kind of west and north side of the property, that's existing.
Okay.
And then, again, along the north side above, like the fields sixteen, fourteen, and fifteen, that's existing and wrapping down along, um, Bowbrook there, that's all existing.
And there's, there's no like, um, privacy fencing planned for anywhere along, like where the trees are now?
At this point.
At this point, no, okay, great, I was just curious, thank you.
Um, so let's go item by item, um, basketball courts.
Um, I know, we can't lose those.
No way.
We cannot lose those.
I was gonna say, I point out that the two items on this list that were specifically requested almost unanimously by students were the basketball courts and the play area.
Yeah, and, you know, the basketball courts, not just for recess, but the gym teachers can use them, as well as their, part of their outdoor classroom. But, right now, the kids have nothing. You know, Jay had some basketball hoops put up on the outside of the building, and they are used constantly. I, I, it was so desperately needed, and so we need that. And then they need something to do besides stand around, and having some sort of outdoor, more mature playground, we're not talking about, you know, something you would see in an elementary school, would give them something to do, uh, which they don't have now. So I, I feel very strongly that tho- those need to stay.
And I, I will agree that those are things that I have heard from kids.
There's nothing to do.
That, that, what, that that's what they want in the new middle, you know, they want something to do outside, so.
Let's give them some retro seventies playground stuff.
Then you'll definitely need to keep that elevator.
Reducing the surface area of the playground by twenty-five percent.
Do we have to?
I, when I, what I'm getting at is what was shown keeps all the play structures, it just, just made the, the, you know, rubber surfacing a little bit smaller.
They're a little closer together, the play structures.
It's still seventy-five percent more than we have now.
Yeah.
Excellent point.
It's also not a hu- it's, it's also not a huge number, like in the grand scheme of things, when you, when you start to look at these holistically, forty-seven thousand is not a, it's not a big number. Could be something, you could add alternate, you know?
Okay, so I, what I think I'm hearing is, keep the basketball courts in the orig- in the, and the playground structures in the plan.
Yes.
Add alternate the twenty-five percent space?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you've clicked on the wrong line.
No, he got it, he got like, wouldn't know.
We're not gonna delete it, so.
Oh, you're right, 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 yeah.
Um. Trees, I thought the trees looked nice. And then when you take the playground, when you do the solar canopy, there, there's more trees to, I think that's.
One of the things about the trees is I, when I look at that, like, I, I think about long-term maintenance, like I, you know, I don't want squirrels then climbing up on the roof, doing things, so I just think we have to be thoughtful about where those trees are located and things like that. I know we don't have to decide that, and then one comment.
Middle schoolers hiding behind them as they grow.
Climbing up them, we're trying to get on the roof, which we've had issues before, like kids climbing up or getting on the roof. Uh, and then just a quick comment about the basketball courts, Scott Owen and I were trying to, like, you can also put lines on the basketball court to do like pickleball
Yeah.
and things like that, so that would be a resource for actually the community and the neighborhood in that area they could, they could potentially use, so. Be thoughtful about things like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
And weighing in on trees, um, I love trees, I think that's great, but that's four hundred thousand dollars. I would want to, I would take that reduction. And then I would certainly hope that there is a community organization that would work to, with the school district to plant trees.
And we're still gonna be spending four hundred thousand dollars on trees, so.
We're still spending a lot of money on trees.
And that, yeah, and another round, you could say, maybe that needs to go another fifty percent, or, you know, so it, yes.
I'd much rather have someone else picking up that tab.
Yes.
Because they believe in trees.
We're gonna have a greater environmental impact for the community and the world at large to have a net zero school or a net positive school. Solar, by having it completely solar than any of, adding any of those trees.
Yeah, yeah.
Buy a lot.
And it doesn't look like we're taking down any trees.
Right, there's still plenty of trees, there's the wetland area, and as somebody who's super pro tree, and I happen to be married to somebody on the tree subcommittee for the city, I've already started texting, um, because I think that there is value in, in having a long-term plan when it comes to trees, because it's a hundred-year decision, right? So we wanna be thoughtful about what we can get done, and also what resources we can use from community organizations that are invested in having tree cover in the city of Concord.
Every year, the students can plant a new tree.
I would say, we can work with you to identify future planting areas.
Yeah.
So that when we do the soils, when we do the area and that, we keep it kind of, I guess, isolated, so that it, it has the right in- infrastructure for you to continue to plant trees to. We've done that at other schools.
Thank you.
A lot of our current trees and things, uh, we have an invasive species called bittersweet that is all over the site property and stuff like that, so. I just share that, it's something we have to remediate down the road to.
Jay, don't be depressing.
Well, it's true.
I know, the bittersweet's terrible, I know.
It's all over the place in there.
Um, sidewalks.
What about number nineteen? I don't see anything checked yet or no.
Yeah, so this is, again, this is more built-in benches and like a stage, so the kids could, could jump around on that throughout the day, there's, they could eat lunch there if they're in that courtyard, um, so that's.
Could be an outdoor classroom area, kind of?
Could be an outdoor classroom.
We could target a reduction in cost and redesign it, so that you could still get something that has the same kind of benefit, and it's just a little less expensive.
I just think of like the, the little amphitheater at Chris McCall, which I feel like doesn't get used at all.
No.
Yeah. Um.
But like, I don't, even like. There's no irrigation, and it's all dirt, and it's all.
Yeah.
Well, I think of the, I think of the little courtyard off of the media center at the current Runlet School. It's basically just a courtyard, but the kids and the teachers have made it a very great gathering space. This is one I would reduce and, you know, look at alternatives or look at letting the kids and the teachers.
Here's a space, what do you wanna do with it?
Could, could you show it again, please? Cause one of the problems with the courtyard at the, um, so what is surrounding?
So this is all concrete in here.
Are there classrooms there, though?
No.
Um, this, this is the music and.
The theater's on the right, the upper, upper corner there is the, uh, band, chorus room, or chorus or orchestra. Um, but there are no, there are no classrooms around, cafeteria is on the south.
We could just do that here.
And I, I ask because right now, my classroom is over that courtyard, and it's very disruptive. When I, you know, it's ninety degrees in my classroom and I have windows open, and so people are trying to use that courtyard. So it seems like it would not disrupt classrooms.
No, and, and we do have a fence planned to keep that fenced in. Um, let me just go back to that one more time. Uh, there, there is a fence that would run here, so that it would keep it safer and, you know, keep kids a little more contained and within that space as well.
And we'd have an HVAC system.
This is on a comeback with a cheaper option.
Sure.
I don't know how you put that into the budget.
I mean, we could say, do you wanna say, we can fifty percent of, I can do some math real quick, and we can re- knock that down fifty percent?
Great.
And say, a target balance of, you know.
I still, cause I feel like we started, like, I mean, this is a years-long conversation, but we started with a lot more outdoor learning opportunity spaces. So this feels like the last of, the last of them. Um, and so I, acknowledging that we've gone from many to, to very few, I do appreciate Linda's sentiment, though, about it being disruptive if it's nested, uh, in classroom, like, by other classrooms, but I just, I still love the idea of a thoughtful performance or learning space that is protected and sort of part of the school, but still outside.
But let's also remember there'll be a better HVAC system, or, so that the windows could remain closed and the, and the temperature and.
Yeah.
And there aren't classrooms near it.
Right.
So we'll leave the one sixty as, we'll leave that in the budget.
That's target, that's a target.
That's a target saving.
Target savings, oh, so, put one sixty here, right?
I have to go, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have the big stuff, but you'll have another crack at this. And I'm not afraid to. At least more than one crack at this, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you for your part.
Thanks, Barb.
Hey, Jay, I thought that, uh, seating and stage was part of a new school's Jay Richard concert series that you were gonna launch.
There we go.
Well, outside spaces, you know, we can, we're gonna. I wonder about that.
Well, that's a nice transition into the next section, which is gonna be harder.
You didn't do the asphalt, yeah, concrete.
Value add, add alt on that.
We have a fundamental difference.
What's that?
Matt and I.
Okay.
I, I mean, that's, I would throw out, uh, add alternate, because it's more towards the end of the project, you're gonna be putting that in. I've had difficulties with both, I mean, concrete can be tough, um, asphalt needs to be redone every now and then. I'd like a little more time, you know, to think about that, as an alternative.
Matt, is, is that the sidewalk we have at like Millbrook?
No, that's a pervious sidewalk, and that's even, that's a little bit tougher.
So, I, I should be clear again, add alternates mean we are taking it out of the project. So going forward, if we're, if we come in under, you could bring them back in.
Do you wanna think a little bit more about which is cheaper and easier to maintain, and we leave it in for now, Matt?
Yes.
But we could also put that in at the last minute, too, it's not something that, you know.
Yeah, I ask just a quick question, so, as we bring the, the to- the, the building project cost down, the contingency is also gonna go down accordingly, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we just need to be mindful of, when we, when we, the, the, originally the contingency was twenty-seven million?
Nine, nine point seven million.
So.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven is all the soft costs.
Okay.
Yeah, so this twenty-seven million has a formula that says, look at the total project cost and multi- take a fixed number in the soft costs that we have budgeted for, and then it says, take seven percent of whatever the total project cost is. So as you come down, you're saving seven percent out of your contingency, everything you bring down.
Right, I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that.
That's good.
Thank you, Jeff.
Meaning there'll be less money for add alternates.
Yes.
We can't just put everything in the add alternate column, that's fair.
Um, all right, so we said we're gonna leave this for now, we'll say no, and we can revisit at a later time. All right, so the next, the next ones will kind of build off each other.
Do you wanna tell people how much we've saved?
Yeah, so right now, you guys are down to a total project cost of a hundred and sixty-eight million from the hundred and seventy-one. And with all of the potential clawbacks or rebates, you're down to one fifty-five. So I think, Jack, you had.
Yeah, give me that one sixty-eight number.
So.
Cause that's what mine feeds off of.
One sixty-eight, seven, seven, eight, four, eight, oh. So this is now, now we're looking at square footage reductions, and which have a much larger impact on the, on the project. Um, the first one is delete multipurpose rooms, so this is about five thousand square feet, and if we were to just quickly look.
This is the multipurpose, um, PE room, about the multipurpose here.
So, up here, this is where the multipurpose room was, you can see these dashed lines is where we would bring the exterior walls in and just kind of push the programs together, so you would be saving, you know, foundation walls here and foundation walls here. You still have to pay for the exterior wall, so you don't get, um, a dollar-for-dollar square foot reduction. Um, but that would be one option. Second option. That's the second floor, um, delete the auditorium. And by deleting the auditorium, we then move over to here, and you would reconfigure, um, the stage area. You would keep that and orient it to the cafeteria and take advantage of the large cafeteria space as a cafitorium. So if you can think of Millbrook right now, where they have, that's kind of a multipurposeatorium, but if you can think of that, that wall that goes against there and it closes, that's essentially what you would see here on the stage. Um, you can see the dashed line of how much square footage you actually save. The, um, chorus and orchestra and band shift in, so that would be that one. Do you guys wanna talk about them individually, or do you wanna?
Why don't you go through the whole list, I think they go together a little bit.
Second floor, you can just see it crunches in a little bit, there's not too much impact on the second floor. The third one is now saying, what if we took that band room and we just put it on the stage? So you save the full band room over here, but now your stage is essentially your band room. So you, if you wanted to use that for anything other than band concerts or band practice, you would have to move all the band stuff off the stage and store it somewhere.
And this does require a movable acoustical partition to kind of shut off that stage from the cafeteria?
On the second floor, um, you can see that this becomes the open to below where that, that stage is. So you no longer have the connection where the auditorium was on this area, so it does change the second floor a little bit in terms of circulation. Oh, and that, that was it, so, let's go back, oh, I'm sorry, there's one more that we didn't do a drawing for, but we can.
No, there's a drawing, it's, it's on this one right here.
Oh, it's this one, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, there's a maker space, that's right here, that's part of the media right now. Um, so there's a maker space that's right here, that's part of the media right now. You also have your robotics and your wood shop below that are essentially maker spaces already. So, but these are more for your exploratories, whereas this maker space is kind of mimicking what they do right now in their current library. So if I were to go back, make a couple of options. You can see where that, that's what the maker space is. So essentially taking, getting rid of that, pushing this glass back and that's how we would take advantage of that square footage. So looking at the numbers, um, the multipurpose room, and you can see there's kind of a little bit of a difference in cost. Even though it's five thousand square feet, it's about two million dollars. The auditorium is about six thousand square feet savings, that's a two-point-four million, uh, million dollar tag. Moving the band room to stage is twenty-one hundred square feet, it's around one million dollars. Removing the maker space is a reduction of eight-hundred-and-sixty square feet, so it's about three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. And then I'll leave this last one after you guys want to talk about these.
Sidebox.
I have a question for the multipurpose room. Is it currently used, what is it currently used for now?
All, all the time and one of the things I talk with the high school kids about is, like I have cheerleader, high school cheerleaders in my multipurpose room, are we using that space all the time for not just our kids, but our high school kids coming down and use our space? So this is like when we're making, thinking about these things, it's not just about the middle school kids, it's about the entire school community in terms of our high school athletes and clubs, et cetera.
So is the multipurpose room used at the same time as the gym?
Yes, absolutely.
So, and then I think, I'm, could be wrong, but someone once told me that the, like, wrestling team is in the multipurpose room while the basketball team is practicing in the gym.
Yeah, so we have three spaces. We have what we call the new activity room.
Right.
Which is used daily. We have the gym and then we have like a multipurpose room, which is actually currently adjacent to our cafeteria. So like today after school, we have the high school cheerleaders in our most multipurpose room. They're there probably until seven o'clock each night. Uh, we have volleyball teams practicing in the new activity room. And then we have other volleyball teams and athletes working in the gym.
So we don't, I didn't see any new activity room in your design?
There's not.
Is that considered to be part of the multipurpose?
So, no, eh, this is where you kind of start to convolute. The reason why we went with the multipurpose room is because your current auditorium with the retractable bleachers was also coined a multipurpose space.
Right.
So you, you know, depending on how often you're using it for band or other things, you could pull the speaker, the bleachers back and have a multipurpose space there. So that's why we looked at potentially eliminating the multipurpose room as, as a VE option. So we're not, we're not suggesting these, it was just purely looking at.
Just getting, I'm getting a feel for what we have now, what we're looking at. So essentially if we got rid of this, this room, we'd have the wrestlers and the basketball team practicing in the same space. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Burgess and Mr. Obar.
Was the reduction of the auditorium just a square foot takeoff or did you consider all the specialty equipment that the auditorium as it's presented here would have?
Um, Harvey did the estimate and I believe they considered all of.
Yeah, so all the components that make that an auditorium would be removed. It's, yeah, cause it's no longer, if it's taken out, there's no reason to have it.
Right, so it's just not the square footage, we're losing, we're losing all the expensive.
Yeah, and that's why those, if you look, if you did a math on each one of those square foot reductions for each of the spaces, they're not gonna be the same because they are proportionately different values per square foot.
Right, and we reviewed like what kind of equipment would go in each of those options. So it's, it was a pretty rigorous exercise, it wasn't simple, sparkly.
But remember too, you're still keeping a stage. So some of that equipment's gonna get moved to the stage in this. So it's not a one-for-one cut rate.
Mr. Burgess and Mr. Obar.
So keeping, yes, it'd be keeping a stage, but in the cafeteria, I feel that presents some potential issues cause you can't have lunch going and have people using that space. And there are going to be times during the day when an auditorium is required. The new activity room we use during the day for present, presentations and the PEG program, you know, has their stuff in there for, for weeks on end. And the other pieces, you know, our current, the room that's used for the PEG performances presents a lot of issues in that there's light in it. And it makes presentations, you know, we, we have guest speakers and we go in there. You can't see what's being projected because of the light. If we have that in the cafeteria, aren't there big glass windows? We're gonna have the same problem. So I, I find the space at Abbott Downing very awkward. So I, I really would hate to lose that auditorium space because I do think that it would be used for so much more than just nighttime performances, you know, of the PEG program a couple of times a year. It would be used, the band can use it to practice during the school day. Uh, I, I think that'd be a tremendous loss.
Other thoughts? Oh, Mr. Obar, sorry.
Um, I have to go. I, so I, I can't stay for the rest of this conversation, but it appears as though if there's going to be any reduction at all, it would be removing the maker space is the only thing that seems reasonable given student needs, student, teacher needs and community needs.
I, I guess I have a question about the band room and whether that's a worthwhile using the stage for a band room as well as. And I, I know that's something, we had talked about it, I feel like at the last meeting and that seemed reasonable. Elaborate a little bit more on how that would work and.
You could also.
If you kept the auditorium.
Mm-hmm. You could also move the music classroom there. You'd have a little less reduction in square footage, but the band room is gonna have some complication with all the equipment, the musical instruments moving that back and forth and how easy will that be to use that flexible stays, space with it? It's a little challenging in terms of the instruments.
If you want to go back to the plan, we could just look at.
So I don't, I put it in a little bit of a.
So there's a, kind of just a music classroom, you know, that's what Tina is suggesting, you know, you could get rid of that instead of getting rid of the band room.
It's less square footage though, but it might be easier.
It's about fifty percent of the cost.
So that's used for general music classes, but, you know, I know there are some complications with equipment there too. You know, they teach guitar in that general music classroom, so they'd have to have a place to store those guitars that they currently hang on the wall in the music classroom. So, you know, these are all difficult decisions, but, you know, we just wanted to throw all the options out there.
And when we got to this point last time, when we were still at Broken Ground, we had reduced down to this multipurpose auditorium as well. So you guys have already done a round of VE on this, do you remember?
We started with a nine-hundred-seat auditorium and then looked at, you know, a six-hundred-seat, four-fifty. And this was sort of the ultimate decision at Broken Ground.
And, and these spaces do replicate what they have right now at the middle school. Because you can use the cafeteria, it's two stories high, so I know you use your cafeteria space too for after-school, like.
Our twenty-one C program uses the after-school, um, the cafeteria every day, is a space.
The auditorium is the new space that we don't currently have. Auditorium is the new space we don't currently have.
We did size the cafeteria too, it's large enough, we can put a chair mat in there. So, you know, you've been trying to think about all of these spaces, um, you know, can serve multiple functions.
Right.
Can I put a financial perspective on it?
Yes, please.
Just so you know. Pull the, uh, VE list up. So I took twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. That total is five-point-four million, if you cut all of it, okay? And then adjusted to contingency, this is all just quick math. You'll drop it another twenty-eight dollars in year one.
That would be the effect on the, the bond rate.
Oh, nice.
It would be twenty-eight dollars.
In your first set of cuts before you got here, it dropped at seven dollars. So in year one, the impact on a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home went from two-twenty-eight to two-fourteen, so seven-dollar reduction. Then if I took all three of those, it'd be another twenty-eight-dollar reduction. So you'd be at a total of thirty-five-dollar reduction in year one. Just so you know, thirty-nine dollars in year two. Just to put a perspective on it. Three forty-four, I didn't bother with that, that's, uh, I'm rounding pennies there. But if it makes your decision any harder.
I would just reiterate what these guys said, which is that we've, we've been through this culling process already. Like, I feel like with these things, we, we made decisions as a group about what we wanted to invest in for the future of our students and they're, they're back on the chopping block and I, I understand why we have to go through this exercise. But from my perspective, I feel like we've done our due diligence, that we have stated that music and theater and performance space has as much priority or should have as much priority as fields and sports. Like, it's a well-rounded education for our kids. And so while these look like big-ticket items, they're big investment opportunities for the future of our youth. And we've heard time and time again how difficult it is. I know we have theater space down on Main Street, um, but how difficult it is to be constantly moving back and forth, the unpredictability of whether or not they're gonna be able to reserve the space. This is, from my perspective, a worthwhile investment to, to retain all of them.
And I agree, and I think we, if we want to guarantee a crowd at the public hearing, we could delete the auditorium.
Right. I mean, that's fair.
But even more.
Yeah, I mean, I want them.
Or the music room.
They'll be used.
Right.
They're being used now, right? I look at the auditorium as the NAR, if in this, right? Like, they're, all those spaces are being used.
Right, and I think this is like the bigger conversation, right? Which is that we have potentially fewer students and yet more square footage. But it's just not, it's not apples-to-apples. It's, we're, we're creating different learning spaces and creating different learning opportunities for our students that require a little bit more space. And, and I think that's fair, even if, you know, the student body isn't what it was at its peak, however many years ago.
Before you came in, there was a discussion about, you know, the classrooms are about two-hundred square feet below requirements.
Gotcha.
That, that adds a lot of square footage.
School has to be big.
Yeah, right.
So, um, so does anyone disagree? Does it, let's just show hands, delete the multipurpose room. Delete the auditorium and do a cafitorium. Move the band room to the stage. Remove the maker space from the media center.
I would delete that.
I'm on the fence about that one, but, um. Cause.
I would delete it because we do have other spaces that, as pointed out, that can be used for that, you know, the what they use, they currently use now. We, they currently use that, well, I don't know what they currently use. I know what they used it for five or six years ago, which was like robotics and, um, some of those things. I'm not sure what it's currently used for.
How often, I mean, you do have a separate space that you use for robotics now.
Right now, but I mean, our, our robotics program is only gonna grow and, you know, I have staff and kids that are exploring drone technology right now, using drones. So I think when you have flexible spaces like that, I, I think it's, it's gonna help our kids down the road cause we really don't know what, I mean, robotics is great right now and drones too, but what's it gonna look like in fifteen, twenty years? So flexible learning space is always valuable.
Full robots, we're gonna need to store the robots.
We're probably gonna be, need a drone landing pad on the, on the roof for Amazon to come drop the shipments.
There's, what are we gonna do with solar though? Solar still needs to be there.
Don't, don't just move, don't catch it. Don't move out of the way.
Charge the drone.
Oh my god, genius.
All right.
All right. So I'm not seeing a, a, a big movement to delete the maker space, so I guess we'll just leave it in for now.
Okay. So two last items. Um, one is actually not really an item, I probably should take that off. And I'll show you, we can talk, we can talk through it.
You wouldn't say the city's just gonna give us that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Delete mechanical, um, uh, enclosures. Now, this is on there obviously because there's a cost to it. But mechanical are your, your biggest investment in the school. So having them inside will increase the longevity of them. So, but, like we said, we're, if you're looking at cutting square footage, we want to bring you guys kind of the whole enchilada of, of options, we'll say.
We had a really long discussion about this when we did it Beaver Meadow and. Beaver Meadow, sorry, Broken Ground. And, and I think the overwhelming consensus, especially from the builders on the committee, would be that would be a really financially stupid choice.
For sure would.
The high school situation's probably proving that out too.
Yes.
But we don't have a choice, that was there.
Right.
The neighbors will appreciate the less, the noise blockage as well.
And the noise, that's true, cause you might actually have to put up, um, screens, especially now that you're in, in, in the neighborhood. So sometimes those screens, the cost of those screens maybe are a little bit less than what we're showing here and we actually didn't do that math. So this is probably, probably should take it off cause it's probably not really that much of a savings at all. Um, the last one, we just wanted to bring to your attention, Harvey, when they put this together, they have to carry city inspection fees, um, and the building permit fee. We know in a lot of municipalities we work in, there's always a negotiation, um, with these because, you know, the city, um.
Charging their own taxpayers.
Charging their own taxpayers. Thank you for saying that. I don't want to get in, in hot water here.
Sometimes schools get waivers for this.
Yeah.
And so maybe we can negotiate with them a reduction.
Yeah, and sometimes, yeah, and sometimes the negotiation is, what are your actual costs? And then you cover their actual costs and then the others is weighed. So, um, that's just to let you know that there could be further discussions to reduce the price after this as well. So grand total, looking at the bottom, um, net savings of two-point-three million, two-point-four in add alternates. So that shifted that alternates. Total project cost, one sixty-eight, seven, 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 four, eighty. Jack, I think just quickly did some of those numbers. Looking at the bottom line number, taking out all the savings, you're at a hundred and fifty-five million, seven, one, eight, eight, oh, one.
Close to where we were at Broken Ground.
Which, yeah, if you come back, you're just under where the Broken Ground cost was.
We've been able to take these out of Broken Ground as well.
Well, we had addition, we had other costs at Broken Ground.
We had a track and things like that too.
Yeah.
Oh, the track.
All right.
Yeah.
Um, so the next step is in two weeks from today.
Twenty-fourth.
The board is going to meet to have a very similar discussion, although it was good that a lot of members were here tonight and, and to talk about next steps. And, um. Keep you posted.
Thank you very much.
And Jack, it's gonna have even more financial.
I'm happy to see you guys.
We will, we will get more done.
Too much, team, we'll see you in the P P.
Happy to renew this.
Meeting adjourned?
Okay.